Okay.
Relax.
Good evening and welcome to the Town of Stowe Select Board Meeting for December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Our first order of business is public comment, if there is any. Um, if so, please state your name and address, and you can have two minutes on anything that's not on the agenda. Please raise your real hand or your virtual hand if you'd like to speak. Seeing none, I'm going to go off the rails on the order of the agenda to fit a few things in before our seven fifteen hearing. So, um, um, first, I'd like to work on the appointment of Gabriel Gabe Lopez in the position of dispatch supervisor.
Who's going to speak over your show?
Yeah, sure.
All right. Um, so here we are again. So a couple of weeks ago, when we had John Fantasia promoted to patrol officer, he left the vacancy of a dispatch supervisor. Uh, so he was in that position for many years, and now to fill that position, we, I, uh, the administrative body met, which is made up of myself, the town administrator, and the fire chief. Because dispatch does all the, uh, because dispatch does all the communications for police and fire and ambulance, uh, all three of us have an input on how the department is run. Go on, Ed. And then so, um, we all met and we decided, you know, what the criteria was. We put out for those existing employees to put in for the position. Uh, we were able to speak to Gabe, and he's done a lot of work. He's been a dispatcher for six years between the towns of Hudson and Stowe. Uh, he's taken upon himself to take many classes, including a dispatch supervisor, running a communication center. He took it upon himself to join the statewide telecommunication emergency response team. So that's responsible for going to other communities, uh, when they have a big emergency and to handle their nine-one-one calls when needed. Um, so he has definitely, uh, taken the lead, and we, all three of us, the town administrator, myself, and the fire chief, all recommend Gabe to be, uh, appointed per the contract. Um, it's our recommendation to be appointed by the select board, and that's what brings us here today.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
Thank you for stepping up.
Sounds like you take a lot of initiative, and that's.
Yeah. I'll take the motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the assignment of Gabriel Gabe Lopez to the position of dispatch supervisor through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks for coming. Okay, uh, let's take the one-day liquor license for Saint Isidore's Church. So, um, is this a new event?
Yeah.
Nice.
We're trying to come, come out of the pandemic and bring our parishioners back together and start celebrating things again. So we're doing our holiday party after the holidays, when people are actually free to do things and not busy.
So you get a little bit of an opportunity for anybody who's watching to advertise, if you just want to say the time and.
Well, we're going to do it on January sixth, and, um, it's going to be at Saint Isidore's. We're still working on all the details, but this is one of our first steps in getting our ducks in a row.
Great. Six P M. to eight P M.?
Yes, thank you.
Sounds like, like a, a nice way to come to, to get things going again.
May I add that it's a holiday potluck dinner? Um, and if folks bring a dish to share. Uh, so you can R S V P. to the event at A V Catholic dot org. Um, so attend the holiday raffle drawing and potluck dinner, Saint Isidore's.
So you'll be selling alcohol?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, cool.
Just beer and wine, right?
Just beer and wine. And the bartender will be tips certified, and there's two crowd managers.
Anybody else?
Thanks.
Sounds great. I'll take a motion.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve a one-day liquor license for Saint Isidore's Church, four twenty-nine Great Road, for Saturday, January sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, from six to eight P M., provided all necessary permits and documents have been received.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Congratulations.
Enjoy.
Hope it goes great.
I hope it's wonderful. We'll, the office will reach out and license.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Okay, um, next, I'd like to take the, one of the common vic renewals out of order. Um, for Delta Epsilon Inc., D B A. Stow House Pizza. So, um, we have, we are renewing this license. Um, and at the same time, we're, we're making a condition on it. We're going to renew it for three months. What, that's our proposal, is to renew it for three months so that, um, our popular pizza place can continue to do business. That's, that's our primary goal, but we also would like to get on the same page about things that haven't been attended to over a couple of years. So, um, Rich, you're, you're here. Would you like to?
Um, yes, Rich Harrington from Harrington Associates. Um, the applicants are working at the pizza shop right now, so they could attend.
Understood.
I've been meeting with the town administrator and the town planner to try to, um, advance the plan so it's ready to be mitigated, and I've updated plans to them today, so the planning has it also.
Great.
And, um, so we look forward to moving past this, and, and, um, so I thank you for your time to renew it and keep them out there.
Well done. Thank you for getting the plan together and getting it to us. Um, any comments, questions from the board? Sorry, Valerie. Would you like to, uh, are you here for this?
I'm just listening in.
Okay, great.
Thank you. So if I may, uh, so yes, we have been working, um, with Rich on the plans, um, and, and we did, uh, we've made great strides in a week. So he did come in with revised plans tonight. Um, it's very promising. So my recommendation is a three-month license with the expectation that in three months, we will just renew it for the year because they will be in full compliance with their site plan. Um, just a caveat, um, because technically there are fines being assessed, so that's why we can hold up the license under this contingency. Um, our intention is not to collect the fines. Our intention is not to shut Stow House of Pizza down. We just want to get them into compliance with their site plan. Um, so again, uh, it's very promising. Um, I'm very pleased at the work that's been done in the week since we've met the first time, uh, and I'm hopeful that within, within the three months, they'll be in compliance and, and we'll be here just to renew the full license.
Thank you.
Um, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Um, so the understanding is, just so that we're all on the same page, that if it is not done in three months, then we then have the, not done, if, 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 if the conditions that we're setting right now are not met in the three months, then we will revisit it in the three months?
Yes, so under the, under the statute, um, we would, if you, if, in order to not renew a license or to suspend a license, you would have to hold a public hearing.
Okay.
So in the end of, so the motion is that within the three months, we're either be back here to renew because they're in compliance.
Right.
But we would schedule a, a formal public hearing to have a, a more formal discussion about the status of it.
Okay.
Great. Anybody else?
And the planning department's cool with this?
Yes, definitely, yes. I believe we sent over a, a memo to that effect.
So if we're still ongoing with the planning board, do we still have to, could we just kind of get another extension if it's kind of, or is that to have a hearing?
Well, I mean, I think we'll have to see where we are in three months.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, if, if there's, you know, one or two outstanding items, I think it's something we could certainly address.
It's okay.
Um, you know, the goal is to have it completed within the three months, so that we're not looking for an extension or, um, a public hearing, and that they could just renew it.
Very good, thanks.
So that would be the hope.
Okay. It's the top.
The top one, yeah. Madam Chair, I move to renew the town's common victular license for Delta Epsilon Incorporated, doing business as Stow House of Pizza, one fifty-six Great Road, through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Pending compliance with the planning board's special permit or public hearing to discuss further renewal of the license.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Still not seven fifteen.
I have some. You want a pair of meeting minutes? No, I think we're going to get to it. Oh.
Let's take care of the liquor license renewal for Jay Malone and Sons, D B A. Stoway Golf. So, um.
Well, that is super.
Yeah. So basically, um, my thought is that we will renew your license. We just, I just asked you to come so that we could, if, if the board members had any questions about your plans to, for, for the golf course, I mean, not hard and fast, understood, but, but just.
Well, as you know, we've been under a lot of duress of that between the company and the golf course from start when you were in the beginning, and then, um, it's just taken us a long time, but we don't want to lose this. This is my grandfather had, had gotten this years ago, and we don't want to, once we open, we wouldn't want to reapply and start all over. But our plans are, is to open that place as soon as we can.
Aye.
So, I mean, it's, you, you know our history.
Yeah.
So.
Um, I don't. Sorry, I'm sorry, I, I, could you entertain, entertain me?
So.
So what's?
I think it was, was it two thousand fifteen?
Uh, two thousand sixteen.
Sure.
Sixteen, we, uh, we started cleaning up the golf course.
Okay.
You know, we, it was rundown, and there's trees everywhere. And then the conservation came over and says, oh, you can't be doing this.
Okay.
So we had a cease and desist, and we went through the whole process of getting everything in order, doing what we're supposed to do.
Okay.
And then we, you know, got all that paperwork, then right after that, we had a C L F Conservation Law Foundation come after us.
Okay.
For, you know, they, and we had taken care of all of that, and then we had to do, and this is at the construction side, the concrete plant.
Yeah.
So we had to make a SWIP plan over there, so we've, and this has cost us a lot of money.
Got it.
Built another, we built a water retention system to clean the water from the sand and the dirt. That didn't work, so that failed, so we had to start over again. So this is where all our money has gone into this process, and we're starting to come, almost come out of it.
Okay, to be able to make the necessary repairs to the golf course, I see.
And there's still things coming at us, you know, like, um, when we made those retention ponds way back, the planning board didn't really understand that, so they took photos and we can't do this. So then we had to hire engineers again and.
Got it.
Had to redo everything.
Okay.
So that's where we're at. We're, we're just battle after battle.
Okay.
So.
But we have tried to keep the golf course cut. We've maintained it.
Mm-hmm.
We've done, uh, we've improved things.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the company's already spent over half a million dollars in, you know, fencing, land clearing, you know, keeping it, uh, maintained. And we've also renewed the liquor license for the last ten years, which also includes a liability insurance policy. So we paid all our bills, but we just, we just, we, as John said, we're just coming out of the water now, so.
But the intention is to do what with the liquor license?
Our intention all along was to reopen.
Okay.
Okay, it was just we didn't want to open it the way it was when, when it was shut down in two thousand and fourteen. So then we started to fix it up, and then that whole process that he just explained happened. So, but we've spent over half a million dollars in trying to keep it the way it is now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, and it's going to cost more money to reopen it.
Got it.
So, as I say, we're doing the best we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's, I think it's just important, like I, like I said, I, I wasn't trying to be facetious. I just, I mean, I've only lived in Stowe for a decade, so I don't know all of the, you know, all of the ins and outs. So I appreciate you coming in.
The company's owned the golf course since nineteen sixty.
Okay.
And Jay Malone is our grandfather.
Okay.
And this, and our, the sons are our, our fathers.
Okay.
We are the grandson, so we're in the third generation.
Okay.
So we're trying to keep it.
Yeah, and, and I, I'm so, I really appreciate you guys coming in and explaining that because that's not any information I would have known. So I appreciate that, and now I got a history lesson, so, sorry, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
That's good. Um, any other questions?
I'll just say that from the Conservation Commission, these guys have been wonderful, and I won't say in public my thoughts about C L F, but.
We won't either.
Anyway, they've worked very well.
Okay.
With the Concom, so I support your efforts.
Thank you.
To reopen.
Thank you very much.
On the commission as well.
That's right. We spent a lot of hours on that golf course.
Good humored and very cooperative.
Very cooperative, even with the SWIP stuff on the backend next to the stream, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With that, I'll take a motion.
You know, I try and, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the town's two thousand and twenty-four liquor license for Jay Malone and Sons, doing business as Stoway Golf, one twenty-one White Pond Road, on premises, wine and malt provided, all taxes have been paid, and all necessary documents have been received. An occupancy permit has been issued, and inspection by the fire department and building commissioner has been completed and signed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, the seven fifteen, I feel like.
Yeah. The Select Board, as the cable television license issuing authority, will consider and vote on a proposed renewal of cable television license for Verizon New England Incorporated on Tuesday, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven fifteen, at the Stow Town Building, Warren Room, three eighty Great Road, Stow, Mass., pursuant to section six twenty-six H. of the Cable Act, forty-seven U S C., section five forty-six H. The public is invited to attend and provide comment, if any. Any applications, reports, statements, and/or amendments, including copy of the renewal license as proposed and/or agreed upon by the parties at that time, will be available for review, download, and/or reproduction at a reasonable fee from the Office of the Select Board. So I will take a motion to enter into the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move to enter into a public hearing on a proposed renewal cable television license for Verizon New England Incorporated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Birch McMichael?
Aye.
Mr. Constanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hegeman Clark?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so we are in public hearing. Hi there. We did it. We got this far. Um, so Jonathan, would you like to speak to the topic of the evening?
Uh, we've had a lot of, uh, delay by corporate Verizon, but our lawyer has been working with their attorney, going back and forth, and, uh, they both agree that this is a good contract. They've gone to corporate, they've gotten approval, uh, finally. So we have many document, and then when you sign it, hopefully corporate will finally sign it. It'll be done.
This is only, what, a hundred and thirty days late or something like that?
I think it's a hundred and seventy, because I counted to see where we were with regards to the requirements.
It's almost six months.
Yeah.
All right.
And may I add, so one of the other asks is also that the board request an H D. channel as soon as possible. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, the contract says, uh, once it's signed, that, uh, the board sends a letter requesting an H D. channel, and they're required to fulfill that within two hundred and seventy days. And consider, considering that we've gone six months over the deadline, we're kind of hoping we can just go as if it was signed at the right time. So you said a hundred and seventy, so another hundred days. So in three months, it'd be nice. We're going to be getting Comcast's in, uh, January, so it'd be nice if we could also get Verizon's.
Yeah.
I guess in March, and then we'd actually have H D. on both providers, which would be nice.
Well, maybe Verizon is listening, I would like to say current, with their compatriots in, in cable service, and so maybe they will feel the urge to deliver even sooner.
Probably.
They've been knowing to deliver earlier than Comcast, so hopefully that will help here.
That's.
But, but there's another piece that we ought to all be aware of. This is a five-year contract versus ten years with Comcast, with a three-year escape clause.
Yeah.
Because Verizon expects everybody will be streaming by then, which I think they're dreaming. But nonetheless, that's their, that's their plan, so we'd be going back at this again in another four years. Not fun.
And what's different than this contract from previous ones?
It's almost the same, except.
So why did it take so long?
Oh, you don't want to know. Well, I kind of. What happened is, is they.
Sort of do.
We're working with an attorney who is hired by Verizon, not a Verizon attorney. And Comcast, they work with a Verizon-employed attorney. In this case, we're dealing with, so you, we've got a hub in the wheel, and the hub has to communicate back and forth. It just takes time, and it's delayed everything. Verizon isn't particularly interested in renewing these anyway.
Oh.
We're not the only town that's gone through this. My, my son and his wife are both on the TV board in Littleton, same problem. It's, it's a family thing, you know?
It's all right. Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the public wish to make a question or comment? Uh, I see none. Okay, uh, I think we could close the hearing if there's nothing further to be added.
Madam Chair, I move that the public hearing on a proposed renewal cable television license for Verizon New England Incorporated be closed.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Birch McMichael?
Aye.
Mr. Constanzos?
Aye.
Ms. Hegeman Clark?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are now out of the public hearing.
Okay.
Do I have a motion on the contract?
Not yet, but I'll make one in a moment. Madam Chair, I hereby move that the board, as cable television licensing issuing, license issuing authority, vote as follows: to grant the subject cable television renewal license with an effective date of December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, to Verizon New England Incorporated, Verizon. All terms and conditions contained in the renewal license have been agreed to by Verizon. Verizon, by and through its authorized representative, will execute this renewal license agreement as set out on the signature page. Further, I move to authorize the chair to sign a letter to Verizon requesting that Verizon provide an H D. Peg access channel pursuant to section five of the contract.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
This piece is done.
Thanks for all, all your hard work.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, so now, let's see. How about we go back to the top and, uh, you're here, why don't we go to the bottom of the list?
Um, hold off on mine for just a few minutes because I, I have somebody to, to, to.
Sure.
Somebody to assist with some of the logistics of going closing.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Denise, would you like to make your report?
Yes, thank you. Um, so just for folks' knowledge, the clothing bin that we installed down at Pomposittikit, for November, we collected one thousand seven hundred and ten pounds of clothes.
Wow.
The bin is, um, full every single week, uh, and some weeks they're making additional pickups. Uh, we received a hundred and two dollars, I think, and sixty cents for the cost of the recycling clothes for November.
Great.
Just goes to the general fund, so it's just another revenue source, but, uh, people are actively utilizing it. Uh, we've talked to the company about potentially adding a larger bin or a second bin. Um, they asked us to hold off. They said it always starts off, you know, really busy, so we'll wait and see how it goes, but it's been very, um, active, so that's great. Um, reluctantly, just kidding, um, I have been selected to serve on the Minuteman High School Superintendent Search Committee as the town administrator representative for the nine communities. Um, our first meeting was last week, and we have a, a number of meetings in January. Unfortunately, one will impact our second meeting in January, um, but my goal would be to have an assistant town administrator on board then that could take my place here. Um, the hope would be to have a superintendent, um, on around March first for appointment to begin July first. Um, so, uh, just to let you know that I am participating in that. Uh, we are working with MART to provide shuttle service, um, in town for a number of different purposes. Uh, we expect the service to begin mid-January with transportation to and from, uh, the former fire station to the South Acton Train Station during some of the peak morning and afternoon times. And then from a number of complexes in town, uh, specifically Pilot Grove, Elizabeth Brook Apartments, and Meeting House. And they would make two different routes. One would be to the Linear Plaza and the Maynard Market Basket Plaza, and the other route would be to the Highland Commons in Hudson. Um, so the MART has a grant. Uh, the plan would be for the first, I think, three months to offer this at no cost, and then after, for a minimal one or two dollar per ride cost. We are looking to see, uh, how it takes off. We figure these static routes would be, you know, sort of the first test case. Uh, there is a possibility to add additional routes. There's a possibility to have, um, on-demand pickups, depending on the availability of the van drivers. Um, and there's a possibility of expanding the service. Um, for instance, Boxborough is looking to hire the van drivers themselves and have them be employees of the town. MART will provide the van, and they would have sort of however many hours they want. We're not at that point. Um, but potentially we could be, so we'll see how this goes, but we're really excited about this. We've had a lot of meetings with MART, um, Valerie, myself, and members from the, um, Council on Aging to talk about, you know, the goal is not to, um, take the place of the Council on Aging shuttle van, uh, but to supplement it. So some of these dedicated routes, um, we're planning to do right now. We're talking about like a ten A M. shopping route and a one or two P M. shopping route. So that if people want to go in the morning, they can go. If people want to go in the afternoon, they can go. Um, whereas the Council on Aging van usually doesn't do afternoon rides. Most of their rides are during the morning. And then, as I mentioned, the train station shuttle would be, um, I think it's like five forty-five to six thirty, is sort of the peak morning commute times. And then it's like four thirty to five fifteen or something in the afternoon. Um, MART is working on, um, some information. We will have information on our website and our social media channels. Uh, we'll likely put out a townwide call and let folks know that this is starting up. Um, and I would expect, right now, we're targeting mid to end Jan, end of January, so keep your eyes out, and hopefully this will be running soon.
Can I ask you a quick question about that? So that is not an age restricted one?
It is not.
That is like anybody who needs to use.
That is anybody, um, it's including children with parents' permission.
Okay.
So it's, you know, we talked about a number of things in the future, you know, potentially from Pompo to Beach or things like that. So, um, really, the possibilities are endless once we figure out what works in town and if there really is a need for this type of service.
That's fantastic.
And will this be a pay-to-ride service, or?
So the first three months, they're going to do free, and then after that, they're looking at some type of, like a dollar or two dollars per ride, something nominal. Um, they haven't finalized that yet because we're going to sort of see where it goes in the first few months.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then it would continue until the grant is.
It's tremendous.
Until the grant is up.
Other transportation in Stowe?
Yes.
Might be able to use my Charlie card.
I understand, thank you. So when the grant is up, MART will stop?
Uh, so we've talked about, again, the potential for funding to keep it going. It all depends on what the needs are.
Okay.
Um, they're rolling this out in sort of all their communities, but it's all a different structure. So Boxborough, as I said, so we're similar to the way Bolton's planning to run it. Um, I think it's just going to be a matter of figuring out what works best. Uh, you know, I don't think they can keep it up with every community doing something different. If they take it on permanently, they'll have to come up with some more standard.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but that, that's what we'll work on, sort of as the pilot program goes on.
So the pilot is how long?
I don't remember. I, I believe it was multi-year. Um, I think we talked about it. It was more than one year.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it really is great, um, and they've talked about, um, their vans, they're contracting with other companies to provide van service, so, um, they really want to hit the ground running and, and, and have this opportunity. Um, and we started, obviously, with three, these three, um, complexes. Uh, we talked about the villages, we talked about, um, the Regency, but most of those have individual cars, garages. There's, they're. The Regency, but most of those have individual cars, garages. There's they're more likely to be able to drive around or have access. Whereas the three, you know, could be more apartment style. Maybe there's not as much transportation there. So. We're starting with these three and see how it goes, but again, there's possibilities of other places, other destinations. They have a twenty mile radius that they um would drive, so. If we find that there's a dire need for people to go to the Burlington Mall, we could do that or the frame, you know. You could so a Leahy Clinic, you know, we could certainly set up something if there's a need for um a lot of folks to go in one direction. So. We'll be working on that as it as it progresses and information will certainly be coming out um over the next month.
And will they be doing communication to let the residents know and?
Yeah, so they're putting together um documentation. We'll we'll probably handle the dissemination of it. Um, you know, we have very active social media accounts in our website, so we'll. We'll do that. Um, talking about it in meetings. Um, the Council on Aging has uh point people in all of the three. Um, complexes that we're working with. So, um. And as I mentioned, we might just do a townwide phone call just to let folks that's available and to visit our website for the specific information.
That's great.
Um, as some of you may have seen on social media, the town building has been suffering some mechanical issues recently. Um, you know, Hector was a result of or a victim of that yesterday, I guess, when we had to reschedule a meeting we had. So we had, um, we've been having some water filtration repairs. Uh, as you may recall, DEP has requirements for this building because of PFAS that we needed to actually replace the water filtration system. Uh, we they've been working on it since before I got here. Um, and we had to get it completed by December thirty first and so. Uh, two weeks ago, we had to close the building on a Thursday afternoon. To swap out that filtration system and get that back up and running. And then yesterday, um, we uh noticed a sewage running into the basement of the building. Because there was a blockage in the septic line that they were out for a few weeks ago and thought they took care of the blockage and apparently they did not. Um, so we had to close the building. Um, we could not use the water, so that was, I mean, we could we could have dealt with the sewage if we needed to at the time, but. Uh, we could not use water, so we had no running water toilets. Um, Servpro came out last night. Uh, the the company came out last night. They've assured us. For now, the blockage is clear. Um, and Servpro sterilized and cleaned um the basement. Um, you know, we, uh, as I mentioned, a few weeks ago, they came out with a camera, ran it through the lines, thought everything was clear, so we're trying to figure out. What is now causing um within like two weeks to be blocked again. Um, we do have some funny. Pipelines that makes a sharp turn. We don't know if that's causing it and why all of a sudden. Um, but unfortunately, when things like that happen, we have no choice. It's a public health issue and we have to close the building, so. Um, just wanted to make folks known uh aware of that. Um, and speaking about the town building. Uh, beginning on January first, I'm going to start closing the town building at noon time on Fridays. Um, it will not alter employees' schedules, but this will allow employees to finish their work for the week. Um, I've been getting some. Uh, there's been some concern from employees that by Friday, they're not able to get packets done, they're not able to get minutes done. Um, it's slow to foot traffic normally, um, but the people that come in tend to come in for long periods of time. And that may include employees in other buildings that are just looking for someplace to hang out, or residents that just wanna visit. Um, and it's been, it's been weighing on employees trying to get stuff done. Um, I talked to department heads. Um, they all fully support it. Several of the departments now close their door anyway on Friday afternoons and then they get criticized that why is your door closed and your door isn't closed? So, um, phones will still be accessible. Employees will still be here, but we will be closing the building at noon time to foot traffic. So that folks can try and get their end of the week work done. Um, the surrounding communities, actually, no one has opened a full day Friday. Uh, Bolton is closed entirely to the public on Friday and Maynard closes on a half day. Um, I broached the subject of a half day on Friday and employees didn't wanna work later during the week, which is fine. Um, but this is a good way to let them sort of, you know, get done, respond to phone calls, emails, catch up. And feel like they can actually go for a weekend and come back fresh on Monday. So, uh, we'll be putting information out about that as well.
That's great.
Anything else? That's all I have for you. Any questions?
No, thank you. Alright, let's see. Let's go back to the common Vic licenses. If we can proceed in order. Are are you all set?
Um, I just spoke to. Yeah, and he said he'd be here in like in eight minutes according to his GPS.
Well, we'll just, when when you're ready, we'll. Um, so let's do the common fix for Honey Pot Hill and Stow Cafe. I believe all the paperwork is in order.
Yes.
And so we can just move through those things.
Yes.
If you will, Hector.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the town's common victular licenses for the following businesses through December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Honey Pot Hill Orchards LLC, one thirty-eight Sudbury Road, Stow Cafe, one eighteen Great Road.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. And a class two license renewal for Great Road Fuels. I believe that's also in order.
Yes, it is.
So, once again, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the town's class two license for Great Road Fuels, three sixty-eight Great Road through December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. And then the long list.
It might take eight minutes.
That'd be great. Just get everything, just bing bang boom.
Can I make a comment on these?
Yes, please.
Uh, so this motion is contingent upon um Fire and Building Commissioner inspections. Um, I will say all inspections have been completed, but there are a couple of issues with the with a handful of businesses, just things that need to be updated. Fixed, tested. Um, so that's why we're asking you to approve them contingent upon that. Those that are in full compliance and have passed their inspections will get their license. Those that have not will work with the Fire Chief and the Building Commissioner to meet the requirements and then we'll release the license.
Great. Okay, ready for a motion?
Madam Chair, I move I move to renew the town's twenty twenty four liquor licenses for the following businesses. Provided all taxes have been paid and all necessary documents have been received. And for all on premise license premises licensees, an inspection by the Fire Department and Building Commissioner has been completed and signed. Twenty-nine Culinary LLC doing business as Nance Market, two seventy-one Great Road, Package Store Wine and Malt. AL and B C Inc., eight Hudson Road, Package Store, All Alcohol. Fourth and Field, three oh two Boxborough Road, On Premises, All Alcohol. Honey Pot Hill Orchard LLC, one thirty-eight Sudbury Road, Farmer Winery Pouring Permit. J Salamonia Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as Russell's Convenience Store of Stowe. Three ninety Great Road, Package Store, Wine and Malt. Necross's Spirits Incorporated, doing business as Colonial Spirits of Stowe, one seventeen Great Road. Package Store, All Alcohol. Red River Rock Incorporated, doing business as Red Ginger Restaurant, one seventeen Great Road, On Premises, All Alcohol. Robert Page the Third LLC, doing business as Butternut Farm Golf Club, one fifteen Wheeler Road, On Premises, All Alcohol. Stow Food and Beverage LLC, doing business as Stow Acres Country Club, fifty-eight Randall Road, On Premises, All Alcohol. Wedgewood Country Club of Stowe Incorporated, doing business as Wedgewood Pines Country Club, two fifteen Harvard Road, On Premises, All Alcohol.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye, that's unanimous.
If anything else, if not, I'll start.
No, we're we're, we still got a policy to do here. Let's discuss the draft flag policy.
So why do we need one?
Well, so i- if you'll recall, um, there was a case against the city of Boston a few years ago about flags. Um, if you follow municipal politics, uh, in early November, there was a very. Ugly select board meeting in the town of North Andover over the hanging of a um flag. Um, after that, municipalities have been um receiving FOIA requests for flag policies. Or requests to hang flags have been coming out to see what, who does or does not have a policy. Uh, we technically don't have a town flag pole because there's the one across the street, but we don't hang anything on it. Uh, but it's a fairly benign policy that just states we don't hang anything on it. Um, so I figured before we are requesting or someone requests. Us to hang a flag or we're requested um to provide our documentation on policies. I would put it before you to have this conversation and adopt it so that it just sets the groundwork for what we do and do not allow.
We don't have a town flag pole, so the one in front of the library and the one at the Lower Village Common?
So technically, under the, like, when you're lowering a flag, it's at the municipal building. This is our main municipal building. We don't have a flag pole here, so. I mean, you could make the argument that all the flags at town buildings are municipal flag poles, but we don't have an official flag pole here.
But this policy would.
It covers all municipal buildings, yes.
I have no problem with it.
No, it's a it's a great written policy. I just didn't understand the reason for it, but now I do.
Thanks for asking. We all do.
Yeah, I don't see any edits that were needed or anything.
Let's go for it.
Alright, I did the long one. I can do this one. Madam Chair, I move to approve the flag policy as drafted at this meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Okay. Good timing.
A moment to catch your breath. Okay.
Can I start?
Oh, please do.
Um, yeah, I was, um, I wanted to see if we, um, if I could get uh menorah lighting done, you know, in the town. And I reached out to, um, this is Rabbi Polter. Um, Rabbi Polter, this is the town select board and the town administrator. And um, I don't I don't have a large menorah, so I figured, you know, um, where would I go for a large menorah? Well, there's these different havads. Um, that are the surrounding area, Acton being the closest one. And um Rabbi Polter's, you know, gracious enough to say that if we wanted to do something, so he'd be willing to. You know, provide a menorah for, you know, for a lighting. Um, as far as the logistics, you know, Hanukkah does end on Thursday. Originally.
Well, Thursday night is the last lighting.
Yes, thank you.
Right, so Friday, it's ends on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Make sure they understand. Only only Jews think that the night begins, that, you know, the twenty four hour period begins at night, so I just wanna be clear that, you know.
It's been a while since I've been to Hebrew school, so I'm sorry. Um, at any rate, I thought, um, originally, we were gonna do this last year with the Stow Lions Club. And unfortunately, it got rained out. And so I reached out to the Stow Lions Club this year and they're not, they're not doing an event, so. That's why I thought if we could just do something, you know, on our own. And, you know, we were discussing where we could do this and, you know, um, well, first of all, in terms of a time, we were thinking Thursday night at five thirty. It would only be about a half hour event. And as far as the location, we kind of, you know, scoped out the area and I guess the ideal. Location would be in front of the common at the library, but I if I'm not mistaken, on Thursday nights, are there like a group of people that?
They protest arms.
Yeah, they protest.
There's a piece.
The peaceful protest.
What time?
They're usually from five to six.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so as a, and we didn't wanna interfere with, you know, any any other group that's going on, so. The other uh possibility is um the town common, uh, you know, near where the Christmas tree is, there's an electrical outlet. And as far as the event. It can be, first of all, it's not gonna be a very large crowd because it's like very last minute. I'd be happy if we got twelve people frankly to show up.
You never know.
You people are all welcome, so I would at least give a five more people.
Think of this as the pilot for next year.
And it'll be in the paper tomorrow, so if you advertise it.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I was thinking. And we could either make it very simple or a little less simple. Should I start with the less simple or the simple? Um, the less, the less simple would be.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be less or more simple for you. It's just, you know, whatever, but.
Do you wanna explain what it would be?
Whatever, I mean, typically it's an electric menorah. Uh, the one I would provide here now is a six foot menorah. Um. And normally it's just the bulbs that are lit for the event. Typically, it's preferable to actually light. You know, to actually light a a f- a fire for the half hour that we're there. Obviously, after that, we turn it off, pull up, these things screw into the bulb. And you just light the fire, cause the the precept, the ritual is supposed to be done ideally with fire to to fulfill the obligation. Um, so while we're there, we would do it and, you know, probably bring a little. Some potato pancakes, Hanukkah latkes along and just, you know, people want a little bite and drink. And then before we leave, which is again in the cold weather, not gonna be two hours, let's let's just assume a half an hour, I put these out. Take them back with me and I just screw back in the bulbs and the bulbs remain lit. And this case, this year, since we're at the end of Hanukkah, we would just leave it lit overnight and the next day I'd come back and. And remove the, remove the menorah and take it back. You know, for next year, we can replan it or whatever, but I mean, it would be this, even for next year, it would be. Similar thing. Only one night would have a gathering, wouldn't gather every night. One of the eight nights, whichever. Uh, Leonard decides or whatever night we choose on. And that's the only night that when we get together, if if it's okay, we would use these for the lighting and then, like I say, half an hour before I leave. I put them out, I take them back with me, I put on the lights and and the lights stay lit for the for the whole Hanukkah and, you know, Leonard, who lives nearby, would come every. Night and just put the switch on to add another bulb, you know.
This year it'll be one time.
This year you don't have. I'm coming Friday to pick it up.
And I lock out and maybe next year somebody else will do it.
Yeah, okay. I mean, if need be, I would do it, but just since you're close and you want, you know. Um, so yeah, I mean, I'm the Chabad Rabbi in in Acton and typically your jurisdiction includes some of the contiguous towns and so. You know, we've had a few people from Stowe who have been coming to us in the past, though I haven't met Leonard yet, but. We made our acquaintances now, so that's kind of the gist. Uh, no rocket science, just a nice little get together and it's a. Good, happy holiday message for everybody and.
And everybody's welcome.
Right, great.
So for this year, again, it would be, it would be Thursday night, five thirty and I guess. This year at least, we're talk, I guess we would be talking about the common, just not to interfere with them or whatever, you know. If next year it's uh different and they're not, you know, we wouldn't choose, even if they're there, we wouldn't, today we're, this year we're limited to Thursday night, cause you know, we got left basically. Tomorrow and Thursday, but. Um, but, uh, you know, in a in future years, we were just, if if we could do it, I, you know, by the library and that little comment. Think a little better location, we could just choose a night that nobody else is, you know, whatever, but for now, we'll deal with now, a year is a long time, so. And, uh, yeah, I don't know if there's any issue with the uh with the potato pancakes or whatever, food wise or whatever, but we're licensed by the state to, uh. You know, to be a a food service place and, you know, and I mean, it doesn't include any highly bacteria food anyways. There's no fish, no chicken, no, you know, fi- uh, meat or anything like that. It's just, like I say, it's a potato pancake and some drinks. I just came from Acton, but we just did it. That's where I'm rushing from now. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you for coming.
So just to clarify, uh, soft drinks? Yeah, 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 no, yeah, exactly, yeah, just soda, iced tea and water. Because we just did all of our. We're thinking about all the alcohol everywhere. Yeah, no, no, no alcohol, I meant soft drinks.
I I'd be tempted to ask for it, but we won't.
No, no. Not this year. Any other questions from the from the board, from TA? Yes, Hector.
Um, is there any reason not to do it at the Lower Village Common?
I think that's where he's referring to.
Oh, that's the community park?
Uh, we're run where the Christmas tree is.
Yeah.
Near the mall, near the str- near the shopping center.
Cause I was also gonna say that, you know, the people that are doing the peace vigil, they're just right there by the bus stop, you're not. The trolley stop, you're not gonna be interfering, but then I think if you do want. You're not the trolley stop, you're not gonna be interfering, but then I think if you do wanna do it in town center, but.
It just seems like such a small.
It is.
It's a small space.
Passing by, they might think it's the same event and.
Right, and I think they're like honk if honk if it's for peace and then you don't want people honking during the menorah lighting, that's too.
They could, but I I I mean, it just, I I don't wanna interfere with what they're doing.
You'd have the guaranteed five people attended.
Yeah, ideally, that would be the place to do it. If we had all eight days to choose from, you know, next year, whatever, you choose a day when nobody's there, but given there's just this, so.
Whereas, you know, at the common, you know, there's like people um, you know, at Stowe Lions, they're buying trees and they might be curious and they might wanna come over and, you know, participate. So in terms of getting other people, that's probably a a more natural kind of, you know, connection, I would think. Cause this is a festival. It's not, this this is not political.
Right.
It's completely a holiday type thing.
You beat me to it. I was gonna ask why have don't we have a menorah yet in town? There's menorahs in other towns, so it's like.
Here we are.
Yeah, it's may affect just about.
So this came out just perfect timing.
In less than forty eight hours, it can be up, yeah.
So actually, I'm not sure if there's electricity in.
I did notice.
Here, so I think lower village makes more sense cuz there is the dedicated power.
They both have a an outlet.
There's an outlet at the trolley stop.
Oh, at the trolley stop, okay.
And also at the, I think there's one by the memorial.
In the front of the library common, there's also a plug and then over there there was also, yeah.
Okay, can we say what time? Cuz I'm putting this in my calendar now, five thirty, okay.
This Thursday.
This Thursday, five thirty, great.
June end and end time as well, or we're figuring probably only about a half hour.
Half hour maximum.
I wish I could join. I fortunately have other plans and won't be able to join, but.
I'm looking forward to that, so.
That sounds like wonderful.
Sounds like you're familiar with them?
I am familiar with them. I've eaten them before with friends, yes.
And you've survived.
And I have survived. I loved them. I love them. Little applesauce, little sour cream.
Oh, there you go. She knows it, okay. So you're a fellow tribesman?
I'm not, no, no, but.
You're speaking like one.
We're Episcopolo, so we. We're all, yes. All right.
Yes, I would also come for the latkes. Another engagement, that's right, maybe two. Next, next year we'll give more notice and we'll plan it in advance and.
Yeah, yeah. It was just one of these things. I I thought we would be doing something with the Lions Club and. You know, when I finally got in contact with them, they said, you know, they said they um. They need, they're getting older now and they need some young people. And they asked me if I wanted to join. I said, I think you got the wrong, you got the wrong age group.
Well, they didn't even do the tree lighting ceremony.
Nope, they did not.
But maybe next year we'll get a group that will do both. Well, I don't I don't know what time when Hanukkah falls next year, but.
Maybe we'll think ahead a little next year and put out the word that we.
Yeah.
See if, see if there's anybody that'd like to step forward in a.
Right.
If we request it in a timely fashion, then. Get people to have a chance to think about it.
Couple of few months in advance and then you decide how you wanna work it, but.
Yeah, right after Halloween. So is there anything else we need to do? Um, just say.
No, I think if if it will be at um lower village, we don't, there's no impact to traffic park. There's plenty of parking there. Um, so I I don't think it rises to an event permit. Um, I think just granting use of the town spaces.
Great.
Great.
Before I read the motion, I just wanna clarify, it says town center park or town common, town center?
Cause that's how the request came in. I would just, I would ask add lower village instead.
Village common, okay.
Yes.
That's the one right next to the shopping center.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, on the right, well, facing the shopping center, it's on.
With a tree, with a lit tree is, yeah.
Please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the lighting of a menorah at the lower village common on December fourteenth, twenty twenty three, as requested by Leonard Golda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome, sure. Sorry I was late.
So you're a congregation Betheller, huh?
No, no, I'm Chabad center in Acton, on Great Road.
Okay, got it.
So, uh, we had a couple of people from Stowe who have been coming to us and, uh, you know, is actually, one of the people is actually. Gonna be moving probably in about uh seven or eight months, so, but he'll be, I told him about it, so. He'll be able to squeeze in this year before he moves. He would have loved that we. Would have happened earlier, but whatever. You know, as they say, what what do they say in in investing, they give this example, when was when's the best time to plant a tree? Twenty years ago. Next best time? Today. Well, that's it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Lenny, you have a scarf there too.
Oh, thank you.
What do you have? We've got all their things.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Good night.
All right.
Now we get to, so just say, um, a board vote on authorizing the signature of the Maya health benefits?
Yes.
I have no questions. Anybody else?
I have no questions.
I'm sure all the questions were asked and answered between you and the union and then.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a fairly standard health insurance trust agreement. Um, the unions have all signed off. They are all supportive of the move. Um, what day is today? Tuesday. I believe Thursday is when. The Minute Manishoba Health Group is taking their vote to formally dissolve as of June thirtieth. Um, and then we will still have to find out how they plan to. Aportion the the deficit that they have, but this will at least get us moving in the right direction with a new.
To say, how does lack of good accounting on their part? Wind up having to be a penalty on our part?
Yeah, I don't even know if it was lack of accounting or if they were just trying to retain uh participation and and. Kept putting forward lower rates and lower increases than the market. Um, and it just caught up with them, I I think. Um, I think that's what they were trying to do, um, and then it just snowballed more and more. And I would say, um, during, you know, when you're not increasing the rates and then we had COVID. Um, and the claims have escalated and they're just not making those adjustments cuz they don't wanna have, you know, multiple years of double digit increases. They just couldn't get out of it.
And this will go into effect as of tomorrow?
No, no, this is so July first.
July first.
So we, the current plan that we're in is good through June thirtieth.
Oh, okay.
This would be the July first um effective date.
So there won't be any gap in.
Nope, there's no gap and um we've been working with Maya, I've now been working with Maya. Um, to make the transition, so they will help do the new enrollments. Um, because they're offering, um, Maya is solely Blue Cross products. Um, so anyone that's in the Minute Manishoba Blue Cross will just carry forward into the same plan unless they wanna choose. And then if folks don't enroll in a new plan, they will be placed in the most comparable plan to the one they're right, they're they are in now. But we will be sending out re-enrollment forms to get folks to actively select a new plan um of their choosing. But Maya is gonna help with that and they will be on site um to help deal with some of the paperwork and and assist getting us through this.
The very last line of the agreement says effective after July first nineteen ninety two.
It's the trust. That's when the trust was formed.
Okay.
Okay, I'm ready for a motion.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to authorize and sign the Maya Health Benefits Trust Agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Minutes. I thought they were good.
Yeah.
They look great.
I'll tell you, this is the best fun I've had all day. It's one of those days. Any um comments or or um edits minutes? None.
All right, Madam Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the November fourteenth, twenty twenty three, meeting as drafted.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, that's unanimous.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, meeting meeting as drafted.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, that's unanimous.
With the motions.
Updates, correspondence.
Yeah, I had a couple of problems.
Okay.
So the recording policy, a letter from the planning board?
Yep.
The one point they made that I had to think about is the whole thing about the videos being available. To anybody that has access to the internet. I could see where that can be concerning that, you know, we're not more part of the world where. Somebody could watch you and what you were saying and use it for whatever reasons. So maybe. So there's something, if we could do something to where we have more control over who can have access to those videos. I know there was a propos- a proposal about not making it searchable and only providing the link to people that ask for it.
But then we're not making them accessible if people have to request it. I mean, in my opinion, if someone has to actually say, can I have a link to the meetings? Then, you know, you may wanna know something, but you don't wanna request it cuz then we're gonna know you're watching that meeting. I think that adds another layer of where we are today. We could certainly talk about making it on a site that, you know, even if it's YouTube, not making it searchable or not making it a truly public site that anyone can search on it. And put the links on our website, but I think having people ask for it, I I don't think anyone's going to. I think we're gonna be right where we are today.
I mean, this came up at our last meeting too, that um, you know, it goes to Zoom and it's available forever out there. And we at that time talked about just making people be aware when we're saying this meeting is being recorded. And excuse me, not Zoom, but YouTube and will also be posted to YouTube. And just so people aren't there.
Right.
I mean, that's what we discussed last time at our last meeting.
And I know the argument that like, the thing that really stuck with with me that I was having a hard time, it's the the. That just because you're being recorded means that you're not going to say the things that you wanted to say. I I don't think that's like.
You're in a public meeting.
Public place, like, I think that we we as a society have ended. Up in a bad place where people have been able to hide behind things and just say whatever they wanna say and be anonymous and. Lob insults at people all over the place and I think that like, there's a level of accountability that I think that like we all have to kind of take when we're in. Community with one another, like, you know, maybe you, maybe that just means that you have to. Step back for a second or think about what you're going to say before you say it or or how you say it. Um, the tone that you use, um, and and so I don't. Like that kind of an argument, but like the AI part of it, like I really did stop and think, like, all right, well, maybe there is something to do with that, like. That is, that could be concerning to some people and I get that. But the argument that, oh, I can't say whatever I wanna say, like, that rings a little.
Anybody that says anything in this meeting is recorded and I can see that some people may not wanna make a comment. At the select board for that reason, but at the same time, it's a public meeting and anybody can record this.
We've actually had someone say directly to us in private pri- prior meeting. That she was concerned about having to identify herself and and was. You know, unsure she really wanted to, you know, that she had to think about making a comment at all because she didn't wanna be identified. I think it's, I personally think it's, I'm not gonna judge people on their. Their uh feelings of privacy, any fears that they may have about persecution or. Other or being misquoted or uh taken out of context or any other kind of. Repercussions, I think that's very personal and individual. And I I think it's complicated because we would like to be as transparent as possible, but I think these are real problems.
And that is the price of transparency.
And so I would like to really cons- I I think. If we're, as we move toward a bylaw, this is what, this is what we really need to consider. It needs to be. Thoughtfully worded and crafted so that we can do the best.
Right.
And also just, I I I mean, not just the wording, but to to take care of. I mean, these are, these are our citizens that we're trying to serve and if we're, if we're at the same time saying, yeah, well, you know. Sorry, if you can't take it, then get out of the kitchen, that's, you know.
I think for me, I would personally like to hear from the residents that are not serving in an elected board. I think folks that choose to be on an elected public board should be held to different standards. And I think, um, obviously you can impose standards on appointed boards. But I I would like to hear from residents and whether or not they wanna see these videos, whether it's important to residents to be able to watch a planning board meeting. Or watch a board of assessors meeting if they're not home or if we have meetings on the same night. Uh, cuz I hear from the residents saying, well, we can't watch it because we were watching your meeting. Or they always choose to not watch our meeting live because they can come back and watch it. Um, so I would, I mean, I'm I'm certainly, I certainly respect everybody's opinion, but I think. We're serving the public and if the public is the one saying, we need more transparency, we wanna be able to watch meetings, I think that should be our number one focus. And unfortunately, if people aren't comfortable, it's one thing if people aren't comfortable participating as a as a resident. But they're still participating in public meetings, that's always been there, but if people aren't comfortable serving in an elected capacity because they're gonna be filmed. Then I think they should reconsider serving in an elected capacity, um, because that's the role that, that's the role that they're choosing to be in. Um, so I I feel like the argument for me that would hold more weight is residents saying, we're not comfortable speaking up. Or I'm not comfortable giving my name at a meeting because it's gonna be on video and I'm not hearing that. Right, well, and there's no legal requirement. There's no legal requirement for asking someone for address anymore. I mean, that used to be.
Okay.
That used to be back in the day for minute taking. You 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 could ask if they're a Stowe resident, but again, someone could come here from out of town and speak. Uh, but there's no legal requirement to ask for an address.
Good, well, let's let's drop that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, you don't even legally, you don't even have to ask for a name, um.
It's just for minute taking.
For minute taking or for your for your purpose to know who's speaking in front of you, um, but you don't have to say identify yourself, that's.
So I actually feel that when I give my name, when I'm speaking, that I'm I'm being, I can be held more accountable. And so there is, you know, I mean, being present, having my face visible on camera or being in person and saying who I am. Is part of speaking up and having having contributing to the conversation, but that's my opinion.
No, I and but really, it's, I would say it's at the discretion of the chair. If you're allowing someone to speak without giving a name or address. Um, there is no requirement, we don't, we don't articulate that in the minutes unless there's something, unless it's a public hearing. You know, public hearing, we should be documenting who is speaking because that's the purpose of it, but at regular meetings, if you're calling on the public. There is no requirement to have them give their, especially their address. I mean, this day and age, who wants to go and give their address publicly?
Right.
Um, so you you could certainly, you know, that would be at the discretion of whomever is running the meeting.
So do we need to make this an agenda item so that we, I mean, I know it's already been an agenda item, but. I'm thinking about public engagement. It, do we need to consider? Um, and honestly, just in terms of getting feedback on policies. I wonder if there is a way, maybe not all policies, but some certain policies. That we may find have have are more sensitizing or are more likely to. You know, can't imagine that that, you know, staff of policies are really need to get publicly. Public engagement, um.
I'm not.
You know that was recorded, right?
I'm seeing, I'm seeing.
You do know that was recorded, right?
Yeah, I do.
And the whole world.
In fact, they tried to figure out what you were saying too.
Anyway, say it again, what you're saying.
I'm just, um. I have felt like we have had other conversations where we were trying to figure out how to reach people better. And I feel as though public engagement is is a. And I feel as though public engagement is is a new issue, it's not a new issue, but it's there's, to me, there's so many media to to get information from that we don't know which one to choose to communicate on, and so we're trying to use all of them. And so certain kinds of things, I mean, this generally affects, you know, the volunteers and and elected officials, um, but I I feel like it's, it it just feels like there's a, the there might be more comment that wants to be made. Beginning to get to the end of my rope.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think. If I'm following, um, so that has been a topic of the board, and and again, if I'm understanding that you are referring to soliciting input from other boards on policies, is that the gist? So, I mean, the board has taken different positions on that since I've been here.
Yeah.
Um, initially, it was you wanted to have folks in, have, and then the last time around, it was you're the policy setting body, you didn't really care, not care, but, um, you wanted to put the policy forward and that's the policy, so I mean, it's it's strictly up to you all, um, if the, if there are policies that you want to have folks weigh in on. Um, again, though, keep in mind, the policies that you set do not apply to elected boards. Um, so, um, you know, so depending on who you're soliciting input from or what, um, I think with this topic, um, specifically, we talked about, um, you know, letting it go to town meeting and have town meeting have that conversation, but you you can set an agenda item if you want, um, I can have a draft bylaw sooner rather than later. But the board has been, has approached it differently since I've been here, and at what level of engagement with boards and committees do you want when it comes to policies?
I guess my feeling is, I would like to have our strong opinions, have a spine, but not be un, uh, willing to hear other points of view. In in terms of, I would like to to not just say we wanna be collaborative, but be collaborative, and to me, that means allowing you know, feedback, even if we've put something in place, and it doesn't mean, you know, it might not mean that we change it, but at least we encourage people to say, to go ahead and tell us they think we're wrong, I mean, that's fine, it's better than not having that conversation. And so that's, I guess that's what I'm just trying to tease out.
I'd also agree that I'd love to have feedback and I hear what Denise was saying about hearing from the residents as well, but if I'm not mistaken, so far, we've only heard from one board that isn't even obligated to follow this policy. No one else has said anything about.
Well, not not one written comment, we have had other verbal comments provided to individuals.
Okay.
Often, actually, the the big one that we talked about was the same one about it's up on YouTube and it's out there forever. So that is something that, you know, we hadn't talked about in our
Right.
deliberation on this, so. But I also agree with Denise that if we're, um, have everything we do is public now, everything we do is traceable. You know, so it's like, I I don't know in this day and age how we can avoid it with, at the same time, giving the transparency that we are seeking to you, to have based on this policy, so I'm not sure that there's a solution that avoids, yeah, any one of us could be AI'd into
Yeah.
somebody else, and God forbid. But that's out there now. We just have to not be coming at everything from hate, and that's, that's the tough part. So is there an action item here?
Uh, only to see if there's some way to contain where the videos go.
I think, I thought, sorry, stop if I'm wrong, uh, but I thought we talked about that before, there is like a large cost.
It was something that was gonna be.
It would be a large cost, right?
Well, I thought there was a way to restrict the YouTube, uh, search.
Oh, it would. Right, so storing it, sorry, I think I heard you wrong, are you talking about restricting a YouTube search, or are you talking about moving videos somewhere?
Well, Denise made the valid point that if we move it somewhere, then we control who gains access to it, and then we know who's seen the video, which is kind of a contradictory to the whole freedom of information.
But there, but there's also a cost, right?
Yeah, there would be.
Right, so, right, I I don't think we'd get to a point that we would house the videos in-house, I I don't think we have the capacity for, I mean, we would still have, they'd have to be in the cloud somewhere, uh, cause we don't have the capacity for that type of data. Um, but yes, there is, uh, and I can certainly look into it further, when we first talked about this a few months back, um, I had looked into YouTube and you could make a specific channel, uh, private to the point that someone has to actually go there to get it, you can't just search and have it come up. Um, you know, so we could make a private channel.
But we could put the link on.
And put the link on the website, um, so that someone goes to the website, clicks on, you know, view all of our meetings, and here they are. Um, so there is capability with that through YouTube, um, I'm not familiar with other, you know, recording um, platform sites, if there's other options out there, um, but I do know that that is an option for, um, YouTube, that anyone with the link can access, and then we would just put the link on the website.
So if we could do that, that would be.
I think somebody could still actually argue that we were making, we were restricting access by making it difficult to find, but
probably, but, okay.
You know.
If you still go to our website and.
This will be resolved by the courts.
Right.
All right, are we signing, are we continuing, are we moving to adjourn?
I only had one other question about the town water. Um, so is the PFAS now taken care of in the town water system?
Yep.
No, so are you referring to the correspondence?
Will it ever be?
Well, that and also what happened two weeks ago where the filter was put in place. Basically, what I'm asking for is at the library, well, the library is closed, but at the church, can we drink out of the tap water? Okay.
Not until DEP gives us the okay.
Okay.
Um, so just because the system is in, they have to let it run, they have to test it, they have to come back and do follow-up testing. Um, so, no.
Okay.
Um, the correspondence was related to the PFAS at the, um, various properties, this one was the Fire Academy. So it was just an update on that status. So no, PFAS will be here forever, and we'll be treating it and replacing filters forever.
Well, they're coming out with a way to, somebody came up with a way that they can actually
Reverse osmosis?
No, um, break down the molecules.
Yeah, there's a study out of WPI that's working on some prototypes, um, that was applying for some federal grants to um, incinerate, um, trash and waste, and in part of that, it would actually eliminate the PFAS compounds. I don't know where that is in process, but, um, I I know there is certainly some work going on with that.
That's yours. I'm just gonna tell you something else.
That's all I have.
Do you want to move to adjourn, so that people don't have to watch us? Signing papers?
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Come on, everybody.
Happy holiday.